Happy New Year to all, and I want to welcome you here to the January 5th, 2023, meeting of the Frankford Franklin County Planning Commission. Madam Secretary, would you please call the role?
Yes, Mr. Boggs.
President.
Patty Cross. Sharon Jackson.
Yes.
Keith Lee.
Here.
Paul Looney.
Here.
Timothy Lusher.
Here.
William May.
Here.
Daryl Sanderson.
Here.
Charles Stewart. Brent Swager.
Here.
Russell Wright.
Here.
Four and nine.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November meeting? So may we? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Have a both of them?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all those favorists, they might say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Okay, need a motion to approve the payment of bills?
So may we.
Okay, we have a second. Although the favorists, they might say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Okay. We have asked staff for any items that be accomplished in plan. Do we have an update on that, Mr. Cochran or Mr. Hewitt?
Not a heck of a lot to overhear you, this happened in the last thirty days or so, but I guess we haven't met since we had our series of, our last series of engagement in our satellite meetings. That happened kind of last week of November, first week of December. We, we had, I went through and counted the sign-in sheets today, we had forty-six people sign in. I think that number is slightly lower than what actually came. I think we had a few people, as you always do, don't sign in. But pretty good mix, we got at least a handful at every location. And so forwarded all that info, all the maps and pictures and notes and stuff to the consultants. So they've been going over that. We've met with them a couple times since then with our typical staff meetings and have been going on kind of their next steps in terms of refining some more of the goals and objectives and starting to work on really some of the, the product itself as we move forward. So I think we're going to start moving into that phase where, and I know everybody's antsy, the public's antsy, we're antsy, you're antsy, to start really working on some of that stuff. The next advisory committee meeting is January 24th, and the topic of that particular meeting is community facilities. That's about all I got.
Does the commission have any questions of the staff? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cochran. Okay, next we're going to have to have a couple of motions here. One of them is we're going to have to amend the bylaws to, to allow for three public hearings at the meeting. We do have three right now. We have the Bourbon Warehouse and we have the Carville Lane. So do I have a motion to?
I make the motion to combine the three public hearings.
Excuse me, pardon me.
Chairman, counsel for the applicant related to the Carville Lane zone changes request that honor be continued to a future meeting day?
Okay, then we don't need to.
Right.
All right, so the next one is, the actual, to merge, we're going to, for, because they're pretty much twins on the whole matter, we're going to, do I hear a motion to merge the city and county proposed text amendment on article four, so forth? Okay, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Although, of course, they might say aye.
Are we not doing old business?
Pardon me. No, well, actually, I thought we'd go ahead and put that combination motion ahead and get that moving right along. Is that okay? Okay. Okay, we have a second. Do I have a, okay, you want to go a cardboard on that? Okay, forceful to be fine. Do I, all in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, okay, we have that. Okay, old business.
So, Mr. Chairman, we, we are combining item two and three.
We are combining item two and three for clarification. No, 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 one and two. One and two, pardon me, Bourbon Warehouse. Three's been, three's been pulled off the agenda.
Pulled three off the agenda.
Right. Okay. Yes, we combine one and two, thank you. Okay. And also to be clear on that item, are we voting to just whether we consider it or not, or we are reconsidering? Well, it's, yeah, we're going to vote to see, that'll come out the back of the room. Okay, old business. Okay, Madam Secretary.
Moore Land Investments LLC has requested approval of a minor subdivision plat to create seventeen residential lots on 4.09 acres of property at the corner of Isaac Shelby Circle West and Metcalf Drive. Being all of Lot 1, Parcel 2, as shown in plat cabinet M, Slide 131, the property is more specifically identified as PVA map number 086-30-11-001.00.
This is a county item.
Okay. Mr. Hewitt.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Robert Hewitt, Director of Planning and Building Code for Franklin County. Quick summary background on this item, back in July and August of 2022, the planning commission held a public hearing for a zone change of this piece of property, which is approximately 4.09 acres, and then made a recommendation of approval to the Franklin County Fiscal Court. But there was a condition on your approval in that the final plat come back before you for consideration in lieu of administrative action. The fiscal court had their readings of the, two readings of an ordinance and did approve the zone map amendment, and then the preliminary plat was forwarded onto my office for review by the technical review team. In summary, that technical review team includes all the applicable utility companies for that given location, includes the fire department, county engineer, road superintendent, and myself. And so that process occurred over a series of months. Some easements were modified based on utility requirements, and a public meeting, as required by our subdivision regulations, was held on January the 11th at 1:30 PM in the fiscal court conference room at 3:15 West Main Street on the third floor. That was, the, the adjacent property owners were notified a week in advance of that public meeting by first class mail. We did have some residents attend. They heard the discussion of the technical review team, they were given the opportunity for public input, they had questions and recommendations to the team that were noted of record, and then requested a vote of the, of the team, and by unanimous vote, they agreed to approve the preliminary plat. As such, I went ahead and signed the preliminary plat, which then authorizes the submission of the final plat. So that final plat is before, or is here this evening for your consideration. It is not only substantially similar to the preliminary plat, it's identical to the preliminary plat, with the exception of the required certifications of the technical review team that I noted before. One thing that was addressed or discussed during the public hearing before this body was whether or not it was going to be duplexes, townhomes, single-family homes, things of that nature. So what I have this evening that I'd like to enter into the record is a copy of the land use restriction for this property that has one item on it that reads, I'd like to read into the record, it states, quote, "The use of the property consisting of approximately four acres is limited to a maximum of seventeen single-family residential lots." This document has been recorded in the office of the Franklin County Clerk, Debeau 617, page 398, and I'd like to enter that into the record at this time. And as such, as noted in my staff report, I indicated I would, I would update the planning commission on the, the actions of the technical review team, and therefore I do recommend approval of the preliminary plat that's, that will be before you today. May I have a copy of that? Or the final plat, excuse me. So, just to show, I do have the preliminary as well. So those are original copies, they'll be required to be submitted to the feed room, so I will need those back by the end of the meeting if you don't have. Try not to smudge it.
What's already happened. Does the commission have any questions of, Mr. Hewitt, regarding this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question, it might be for the owner, but did we decide are these going to be a one-car garage and a one-car driveway? Or the final, I see the final plat, but the final development, what, what does, what does it look like?
I don't have any architectural plans at this time. I'm not sure if the project engineer is familiar with that or not, based on his conversation with his client. You give the opportunity for them to speak on it.
As far as technical review team, they, they said it's okay for two-way traffic with parked cars on both sides of the road? It meets the criteria?
Well, there's currently no on-street parking restrictions. The county does have a, a review committee, the road committee, if you will.
So the road committee can put that in a later date if it finds it's too congested? It can't get, two-way traffic can't get through that road?
That is correct. The road committee could make a recommendation to the Franklin County Fiscal Court for that restriction to be imposed, and then order the road department to post signs, and then that would be enforced by the Franklin County Sheriff's Office.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to ask also the public, if you have any questions, these are not statements, but do you have any questions of the staff in regard to this?
There is some public here that would like to speak.
Okay. They just, they want to speak?
Yes, please.
They can speak, we generally let them speak after we've gone through.
Sure.
Yeah, these would be questions, okay?
Oh, questions of me?
Yeah, I don't see any out there. Okay.
Any questions of me?
What's the deal with the restricted land use? So whoever that means.
Do you want to wait and give that, your presentation in there?
Yeah, well, you'll have a chance to actually speak as a public to present questions. Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, are there sidewalks existing to pose, or are they part of the requirement when this gets developed?
There, there are no sidewalks proposed as part of this development. I don't even, I can't recall if there are even sidewalks in the subdivision period. I don't believe there are.
And any of the governors?
Yes, I don't believe there are any sidewalks in the entire development, nor were there any streetlights. So, streetlights have been added over the years at the request of individual property owners. I think at least, I think just one.
To clarify?
Yes.
At the, at the back of the lots, will there be a strip down through there for fire and emergency vehicles?
No, sir, they will access from Metcalf and/or Isaac Shelby. So it'd just be single-family homes.
So these are all going to be single-family homes?
Yes, sir. Single-family detached homes.
Right.
Is it, the sidewalks not, are they part of new stuff now, and this just was older than that, or within the county, there's no sidewalk requirement for subdivisions?
Well, you know, this is, be no different than, than infill lot, so, you know, I did not require any sidewalks to be constructed because there's no sidewalks out there now. And I know this commission says, if you don't build them now, they'll never get to anywhere, but I did not require any, the road superintendent did not request any. All the public improvements have already been accepted in that development.
No, you're saying they're not even the place to go to.
Well, you've got businesses on the west side, gas station stuff, I mean, there's
There's sidewalks on 421, but there's no sidewalks on the inside.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, there's no, so they just have to walk on the street if you're walking somewhere.
Most of subdivisions Franklin County are that way.
Yeah, I know, yes. It doesn't, it'd be better to have sidewalks, I guess, is my point.
Well, in this event, there, there's a high-pressure gas main, and there's also a two-inch gas line that runs through there, along with the sanitary sewer all in front of these lots. So coordination between those utilities, along with some stormwater infrastructure, which has been very sensitive and has delayed the production of the preliminary plat.
Now, Robert?
Yes, sir.
Between the commercial development and the residential development, what kind of boundary or, or fifth row, or what are we requiring there? Trees?
So.
Tall bushes?
Yeah, so there'll be a landscape requirement imposed on the commercial developments to the residential development, okay?
Okay, so nothing from the residential, but from the commercial?
Correct, nothing from the residential to commercial, it's commercial to residential.
Yeah, so the one that is on the, the new building that they're building right now, what is it?
Clark's Pump and Shop.
A what?
It's a gas station.
Oh, okay, so they'll have boundaries on theirs to start with?
Yes, sir. Yeah, there's a landscape buffer along the entire northern portion of their property.
Okay.
With the exception of the detention basin area.
Right.
Did we, the, we approved a subdivision plat, right? There's a bigger tract over by a school. It's, it's developing now, right? We, we had a.
Over by Hearn?
Yeah.
The condos?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The condos in front of Hearn?
Copper Leaf.
Yeah, did it have, it had sidewalks in it?
It does.
Which is kind of close, I'm just, I'm surprised that we would allow a subdivision without sidewalks. You know, this is not, this is not rural, it's urban, suburban subdivision, seems like they should all have sidewalks.
But that one already has the sidewalks in it, so all we're doing is extending those over by Hearn. But none of this does. And I agree, every subdivision should have sidewalks. But I, not, I don't see that we should impose that on this.
You can't retroactively add sidewalks.
No, no, it would just be for the, this, these seventeen lots, access over here, it wouldn't be for anything back behind there.
Any further questions? If not, would the applicant please present their case?
Thank you very much. My name is Bob Pelosi with OHM Advisors, here, representing Moore Land Investments LLC. We reviewed the staff report and the recommendations and agree with Mr. Hewitt's findings. And we originally brought this forward as a proposed townhome development, and a lot of the questions I was hearing asked arose when we brought that forward as well, and there was not a, the residents came out and we heard them loud and clear that they preferred single-family homes. So we rezoned and put the land use restriction in place such that these would be developed as single-family homes. The only construction requirements that have been, that are required for this development have been by the Frankfurt Sewer Department to construct a sanitary sewer extension to service each lot, and from the Frankfurt Plant Board to provide electric service to each lot with underground electric along the back property line with pedestals and transformers, so that each lot can have electric service. So that, that's the limit of the construction plans. As far as development plans, these are single-family homes, so each lot, as it's built on, will be submitted with a building permit application to Mr. Hewitt's office with a site plan and construction plans as any, any single-family home construction. So as far as what the homes will look like, or if they're one-car garage or two-car garage, that would be in accordance with the zoning and the building permit requirements. Other than that, I don't take any questions.
Anybody in the commission have a question to the applicant? Sorry, no questions? We'll allow the public to ask Mr. Pelosi, the applicant, a question in regard, this is besides the speaking, this is just a question in regard to his presentation. Are there any?
Did I hear you say you may have had a question regarding the land use restriction?
Yes.
Now would be a good time to ask a question, yes.
But you'll need to come up to the mic, please, and give your name.
Jenny Staples, I'm a Metcalf Drive resident. I think we're prepared for new homes to come across the street from us, but the land use restriction, I just have one question, the wording in it, my background is in detail, so I'm asking if, in the land use restriction certificate, it says the use of the property consisting of four acres is limited to a maximum of seventeen single-family residential Legally, is that restricting the use of those lots to single-family detached homes?
Yeah, that's what, Mr. Hewitt.
So as, as I would interpret this document, my response is, yes, it would limit it to single-family homes. And that's how I would, will administer this.
And any future owners of the property would be restricted to single-family detached homes?
That is correct. This restriction will run with the land, not with the owner.
Okay.
So with.
Is it everybody's opinion?
Well, that's what he's proposed.
We're going to put detached homes on those lots?
It's been recorded, it's already recorded saying it will be for single-family lots, and so therefore I appreciate you asking the question, because now I'm on, now I'm on the record, and it'll appear in the minutes, I will administer this and interpret this as single-family detached construction over.
Okay, great, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I do have one additional comment, I don't know if this is comment time or question time, when you were talking about the sidewalks earlier. I just would like for whoever to be aware that, again, and I think we talked about this earlier, that Metcalf Drive is an egress and ingress area to get through the entire subdivision. It goes to both ends of Isaac Shelby in a circle and meets, so we have traffic on that road, and we were talking about parking on that road, which is an issue as well. I mean, you park at your own risk because you could be hit out there. There's two-way traffic coming in and out of the, the entire 173 homes out there. So people also have to walk in the street because there are no sidewalks. So if you add seventeen single-family homes, and you can maybe guess one and a half cars per family, or one to one and a half, it would be a massive importance to get people walking off the street onto a sidewalk, even though if it could run the entire length in front of Metcalf on the other side where they're going to build, people won't have to walk in the street. And there are children, strollers, bikes, the school system uses our neighborhood for practicing their, their track teams, there are people running in the streets from the Christian Academy, from Good Shepherd. So I would like to pass on that it would be really important to try to ensure that sidewalks go on that side of the property, just so that you know the importance of it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead this time, go ahead and open it up for more comments, if there are any, in regard to.
There appears to be sidewalk connectivity across the, in front of the Martial Arts Center, so it extends down from 421 essentially across, what's the main drive coming in there?
Shelby.
Isaac Shelby, so if you ran them across the front here, there appears to be relatively close connectivity to sidewalks. They would extend then out to the walking path of 421.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Chris Schimmler, envision Franklin County. I just briefly want to reiterate the, what's already been said about the importance of a, a building sidewalk so people can have safe and accessible places to go outdoors and be healthy. I think it's, we're way past time of building things without sidewalks if we're talking about residential areas. We shouldn't even consider anything without a sidewalk, so I urge you to reform this plan so it allows people to be able to get out in a safe environment. Thanks.
Thank you, Grace. Any other comments?
I've got one.
Oh.
Yeah. You want to ask a question?
No.
Okay.
You don't want to hear mine?
If there, yeah, I'll, I'll hand back here. If there are no other comments, do I have a motion for?
Because I have a question.
Oh, yes.
Maybe for Robert or Mr. Logan, what is there, what's the process? Can we require sidewalks at this point?
You could disapprove this measure and indicate that you want sidewalks. If that's the will of the commission, then they would either approve or disapprove. I don't think you can specifically say you've got to put them in, or else you can just say I don't approve it right there. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hewitt?
So in response to your counsel's statement back to, to the commissioner, I would have a question for your counsel, since the public right-of-way has already been accepted for maintenance by the Franklin County Fiscal Court, if this commission or this body denied this request and required sidewalks, would they still be compelled to if the fiscal court chose that they did not want them maintained?
We, we cannot control the district court.
Thank you.
The fiscal court says, no, we're going to let it go forward without them, the commission does not have the authority to override it.
Thank you.
Okay. In regard to that?
Take the motion if you want to.
Okay, no comments and questions? Do I hear a motion for approval or denial of the request?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, it is Mr. Lee.
I'd make a motion that we approve the final subdivision plat to create seventeen residential lots on 4.09 acres of property at the corner of Isaac Shelby, Circle West, and Metcalf Drive.
We have a second.
We have a second. Okay, at this point, do we have any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? So you got to hear none? Madam Secretary, would you please call the role?
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
No, let me explain my vote. I, I believe that we should not be putting in subdivision, residential subdivisions without sidewalks, where, this is the first case that we've seen testimony about issues with traffic and pedestrians and others, and I think that's something we should be looking at in our residential subdivision regulations county-wide in this instance.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson? Mr. Swager?
I'm going to abstain from this.
Chairman Wright? Motion passes.
Okay, Madam Secretary, would you please introduce the next item?
Continuation of public hearing, oh, we've got to combine it, we're going to do it. Continuation of public hearing, proposed text amendment to Article 4 and 19 of the City of Frankfurt zoning ordinance related to the addition of Bourbon Barrel Warehouse as a subcategory of land use code 461 farm product warehousing and storage as a conditional use in the AG zoning district and establishing conditions governing such land use in the AG zone. And continuation of public hearing, proposed text amendment to Article 4 and 19 of the Franklin County zoning ordinance related to the addition of Bourbon Barrel Warehouse as a subcategory of land use category 461 farm product warehousing and storage as a conditional use in the AG zoning district and establishing conditions governing such land use in the AG zone.
Okay. We did have a, I received a email within the 24-hour period of time requesting reconsideration of the motion that was passed in, in November. The motion, the request is made by Mr. Looney, would you like to go ahead and, and make the motion for reconsideration?
Yes, I'd like a motion to reconsider the vote, the last being approved.
Do we have a second? We have no second? Is there, is there, I don't know how much time I should allow on that, but I don't hear a second coming forward. Okay, so motion fails, so the text amendment that was, as it was passed in November, counsel, it will go forward.
And I believe we had five, at least five different amendments.
Five, five amendments, we do. So there was, okay, so it will go forward. The Carville Lane has been put on hold, so Madam Secretary, would you please?
Under new business, in accordance with Articles 5 and 8 of the City of Frankfurt zoning ordinance, Will Cronbo of CDT Homes LLC is requesting approval of a development plan for the property located at 140 Larland Avenue. The property is more specifically described as PVA map number 086-10-001. The property is more specifically described as PVA map number zero-eight-six dash one-zero dash zero-six dash zero-zero-one-point-zero-three. This is a city item.
Mr. Cockley?
Thank you. Uh, Eric Cockley, Director, City of Friendship Planning and Community Development. This is a planning, uh, a development plan, I should say, that is coming to the planning commission for review because it is in a planned commercial zone. All new development plans in those planned districts are required to be approved by the planning commission. Uh, so we have reviewed this in accordance with our regulations and shared it with the technical review team. And as my report suggests, it meets all of our requirements, so I recommend approval. Um, only a little bit unique thing, um, at the time of staff report writing, we only had a few technical details kind of with the technical review team floating out there. Since then, uh, an issue came up, um, with the setbacks on a corner of something that was omitted. And so the applicant has revised the, the development plan. For the purposes of this commission's review, I don't think any of the changes, um, they certainly don't reflect a change in my recommendation. And we spent the past week sharing that with technical review. We've heard from most, if not all of them. And like I said, um, similar to where we were last week, we just have a couple of very, um, technical changes. Otherwise, everybody's coming along with the plan. Um, essentially, uh, what we've had to do is take the exact same footprint, if you look at the, and I'm gonna share this with you in a second. If you look at the footprint of the building and parking lot location and detention basin location, and we've essentially just shifted it a number of feet, um, to deal with the issue. So I'll, I'll, I'll pass this, um, this drawing out, which kind of shows, uh, with an overlay of the difference, so you can see. And then I can take any questions.
Mr. Chairman, why is doing that?
Yes, Mr. Lee.
Can I ask our attorney, please? I have property adjacent or in this area. I was notified. I have built in financial, appear to reply about it. I would assume I, I have the ability to vote if, if not.
If you, if you deem that you do not have a financial interest in it, yes.
For the record, thank you.
So you can see from the drawing that essentially the, the site layout, all of that sort of thing is, is, uh, is the same. We just shifted it on the lot. So I, I still recommend approval. We'll, we'll finish out the last couple of technical details, um, uh, with the technical review team and, and be ready to route it for, for signature soon, as long as the planning commission doesn't have any, any issues. The development, I don't think I mentioned this, it's a, as you've probably seen from the staff report, it's a five thousand square foot diesel mechanic garage is, is the ultimate user of the building.
What, what, what's it gonna be about?
Uh, diesel repair shop.
Diesel repair shop.
Yeah.
Okay, does the commissioner have any questions or are we, uh, Mr. Cockley?
I have a question.
Yes, to Mr. Sanderson.
Knowing what goes into a diesel repair shop, trucks and everything else, you have a daycare center right next to this place. This is not a good fit at all. It's backed up to Lines Drive, which you have residentials all through there. I, I just need you to explain to me how this becomes a good fit for this area. Sunset, I'm sorry, Sunset Drive, not Lines Drive, Sunset Drive. I, I just don't know how you approve something of this caliber in this area, considering the facts of what's in the neighborhood.
Right, so one of the, one of the unusual things about the planned districts, um, so let me, let me, let me start there. When we get to, in a situation like this, in an existing planned district that essentially has no plan, okay? This is an older strip center and the associated property around it that, and we, I've, I've seen this since I've come to the city in many different places, where we have these older, either strip center or commercial areas, that were developed, many of them long time before planned districts existed as a part of our code. And for whatever reason, at some point in time, a planned commercial designation got applied to them, which creates issues, or can. And, and so what you bring up is one of those issues because if you, if you look through the permitted use table in Article Four, the zoning ordinance, you'll notice that planned commercial is not in there. So in the description for planned commercial zones, there is some language that talks about what your permitted uses can be. And essentially, the way these are meant to function is when somebody comes in to develop a planned district, they would share with us what kind of planned commercial district they would want, and also then share with us the uses they, they want to have. And generally speaking, when we do these developments, we expect to be very flexible, and that's part of the reason you hope people are motivated to do it. Because they have to come to the commission, but simultaneously, they, to some degree, can kind of make some of their own rules. Whether that's bulk density and height, or whether that's the uses they want, what kind of development they want. And, and including what uses maybe they wanna make sure you don't approve later. So in a situation like this with an existing planned district, where my office has no other guidance other than to look at that general language in the planned commercial district and say, does this use work? What we generally have to fall back on is, is, um, because most planned commercial districts have a fairly wide range of what you would assume to be permitted uses is, is we look in those general commercial, highway commercial zoning districts and say, is this a use that's generally applied to all the other commercial uses? And if they are, then my position starts at, that should be considered a, a permitted use, most likely. Um, even though we don't have an explicitly thing to say that, because what I also don't have is something that tells me I can say no. And so we have to kind of be reasonable. There are cases where that doesn't work. You know, the case that we brought to you for the old Sears building is a good example. You know, that was a use that was in a similar, um, planned commercial aging strip center that had clearly been mostly commercial, retail, service uses. And the, the use that came in, while I thought it was a great idea for, you know, a use of that building, was kind of retail, but it kind of had the fabrication, and we all discussed this. So it was one, when I talked to that applicant, for example, I said, guys, this is, you know, this is a strip center that historically has been entirely retail, restaurant. This use is just outside the box enough that I'm not comfortable signing off on it administratively. We need to go to the commission and, and hear this thing out. You know, I, I ended up supporting it, but still felt it necessary that I couldn't just say, sure, that fits. You can turn a Sears building into, you know, it's a very different animal. So in this case, to me, this is smack in the middle of what should be a permitted use in a general commercial zone. I certainly don't feel that I had administrative position to say no. I'd leave it to council to let you know whether you should feel comfortable saying no either in this case.
Due to the fact that you're talking about, now, when you say diesel repair shop, are we talking about tractor-trailers and everything else pulling in there? Are we just talking about, we take the engine, we set it inside, we work on it, and we ship it out somewhere?
I don't have the answer to that question. The applicant is-
Maybe the applicant did.
Okay.
You know, we, I don't think his testimony will bind the applicant. I want the applicant to-
And it, and it may be that they're a diesel repair shop and that that's their specialty, but they also work on other cars. I don't know. We haven't had that conversation, but a good question for the applicant.
Okay, I'll wait till that gets up here then.
Any other, uh, Mr. Lee?
Normally, we're talking about automotive, I'm talking about collision centers, that, there's pretty much a proxy fence, a high proxy fence, especially if you come in a boring neighborhood. Is it, is that in here? Is it required?
There's no requirement for this use for us to have a fence, per se. We do have some landscape buffer requirements. What you'll see on the plan is a note because there's a, there's a, a fairly mature tree stand along that property line. And it's probably better than if I made them cut it down, plant new trees and a fence.
Is that on, is that on their property?
So on the plan, we've, yeah, so we've required them to keep that, and in the event that something happens and, you know, storm comes along and knocks over half those trees, then, then I can require them to replace it with something else.
I understand. Uh, I would make note for the record that across the street on Larland, there's a collision center and a electrical company and a roofing company that's all right across the street.
Right.
So there is people that are kind of sorted in that same industrial-
And right next door to this, in the-
Okay, I just got questions for the applicant.
Does, before we go to the applicant, does anybody have a, in the public have a question? We can speak about this later. No questions, Mr. Lee.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes.
Staff was about to give us an example, or at the end, when, uh, Darryl and Mr. Lee was having the, extraneous conversation here, where you-
It escapes me now if I was about to.
Was all what you said a preface to it? I didn't think that was-
I used the Sears building as an example, yeah.
Or at least that's what I thought.
Yeah, I didn't catch that.
I shouldn't put words in his mouth.
Yeah, I didn't catch anything.
There's no questions in the, uh, any other commission questions?
Well, I, I have a, I have a question, and it may not be relevant at all. We, 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 we mentioned the housing over on Sunset. We mentioned the daycare center right there by, is that a Dollar Store or whatever it is? But there's a school.
Right.
Just down there, a couple of, few yards down the street from there, just going straight. I think that's west. I believe that's west, going straight west. Used to be heard, is no, no longer heard. I think it's what-
It's ELV.
Is ELV still there?
Yes, it's still there, Early Learning Village.
And diesel repair places are, if, if not carefully done, are environmentally sensitive, uh, areas. And, uh, I don't think we need to discuss that, but what, what preventative measures does this proposal have in place that's going to protect, uh, all of those preschoolers and et cetera from the, the environmental issues that show up as a result of the diesel, uh, issues being addressed in a facility like that?
And obviously, the, the sanitary sewer and stormwater has all been reviewed by technical review team. And we have in place through, you know, we're in MS4, so the Public Works Department obviously makes inspections, is, is there as an enforcement arm to make sure that, you know, whether it's this use or your house and you change the oil and choose to dump it down a storm drain or that thing, we, we have something in place that deals with that on a, on a, on a point source basis within the city, so that's a general comment for you. Beyond that, I mean, you know, they'll operate, you know, based on the standards that any other garage would operate. And as, as has been mentioned before, you know, we also have just up the hill, a gasoline filling station that would drain straight down Larland Drive to the school. Four-lane major highway, other body shop uses that surround this site, some of which are much closer and directly upstream to the drainage way that goes directly across the school property.
I, I accept.
So the, the point would be-
Your, your, your explanation-
Living in a development of this type in this location, in this order of operation, based on what else is around there, um, in terms of a concern about its potential effect because of some unheard of environmental concern, uh, would, would seem a bit punitive to this, to this applicant, um, who's trying to invest in the community. And a lot that has been for many, many years underutilized in the back of an aging strip center, uh, within our suburban area. This is infill development.
I understand, and I'll make two points and then I'll be quiet. Two things. The strip center has been constructed or has been there maybe about twenty years. It, it's, it's-
Longer than that, I think.
Well, it may have been, but I recall sitting right here and considering, uh, a request that actually built all those, the Dollar Store, the General Dollar Store, or the One Dollar Store, whatever that is, and, and those things, as well as the facility where the daycare is. I was on the planning commission when those, when that request came and we voted on it. Because we were all requesting information with regard to the access that was finally approved for that strip center. I'm talking, this is reality, this is actuality. I, I voted on that. So, no, i- i- it's not old, old, old. It's old, but it's not old, old, old.
It's not old, you-
It's not, it does not predate, it does not predate sauning, it does not predate, uh, all of those other things that, uh, we've done. That's just a comment. The second thing is, just because we have the two repair automobile collision repair centers, the roofing complex and et cetera, that's been there forever, doesn't mean that we need to put a new one there that creates, uh, environmental health issues. And I use as a reference the football field that exists in Louisville that used to be, years ago, a CSX diesel engine repair site where the football field surface was encapsulated, I believe is the right term, to be able to quote-unquote protect the football players from exposure to environmental issues that quote-unquote, uh, were unable to be removed from the soil that was there where the football field exists. All I'm saying is, you know, there may be things that we can do that would better protect our kids from harm from envir, possible environmental issues. I'm not saying, don't put it there. I'm not saying any of that. I'm simply saying that we simply need to make sure that we have done our due diligence to ensure that the safety of those people are there.
I think that's why Mr. Cockley brought it before us, because I think he feels a little bit of that same way, and that's why he didn't want to make that decision without the board making that decision. So I, I commend you.
Oh, I don't condemn him.
No, commend, commend.
No.
He's heading to the quicksand. I can't get him out of there.
I know, I can't get him. You've done good, Tree.
There's a stool, there's a stool under there that I will stand on once I sink, as far as I can-
I appreciate you doing that, bringing it to the force.
Okay, so at this point in time, we can have the applicant to present her case.
Thank you, guys. Again, I'm Bob Pelosi, OHM Advisors, on behalf of CDT Homes, the applicant. I'll start out by addressing the nature of the business, at, at least as far as I understand it. This is, the name of the business is Precision Diesel Motorsports. And, uh, just to clarify something that, that Eric said was that this is a five thousand square foot garage. There's all, the building is actually sixty-two fifty square feet. There's a twelve hundred and fifty square foot showroom component. So I think the nature of this business is more like diesel customization. I'm not a car guy. I drive an old used Jeep, so. But I think, you know, motorsports accessories, chrome, rims and tires, mufflers, that kind of thing. I think there is some repair, but I don't think there's gonna be any CSX train engines or tractor-tractor Peterbilt trucks or heavy machinery here. This is a, a six-bay, um, building with fourteen-foot roll-up doors and thirty thousand pound lift. So, um, I, I think this is gonna be more like some other businesses we've had in Frankfurt that are, that are more tailored to motorsports enthusiasts. The business is currently operating in Franklin County, out on Twilight Trail, uh, in a complex out there. And they're just looking for an upgraded facility, uh, and they, and they want to stay in town. That, that's as far as I understand the business to be. As far as the environmental component goes, uh, we've designed the site such that a hundred percent of the, the runoff of the impervious surface, that's the buildings, the parking lots, the area out in front of the bay doors, is entirely captured and, and directed to a, a stormwater detention area. There's a strip of permeable pavement proposed, uh, along the width of the detention area that, that would catch runoff. The downspouts will be piped directly in there. Uh, it's an outlet control. It's designed for the, the hundred-year flow and, and all channels down to an existing thirty-inch pipe at the outfall site that's there. and, and all channels down to an existing 30 inch pipe at the outfall site that's there. As far as the buffer goes between our, this project site and the properties that on Sunset, that back up to this shopping center, there is an existing heavily vegetated strip through there. It's got a large drainage swale that runs, it drains a good chunk of this shopping center all the way up to Versailles Road that comes down and cuts along the back property line to the pipe that's near the storage unit property. We wanted to preserve that. Frankfurt Plant Board also has an overhead power line in there. So it, it's mature vegetation, the grading limits do not encroach upon the easement or the setback for the buffer zone. You know, any tree trimming that's, would be done would be maintained by Frankfurt Plant Board. They didn't want us to plant anything new there. And then, as Eric mentioned, the landscape plan does provide a provision that should anything happen to that buffer or be disturbed in any way, it's the, it's the owner's responsibility to, to restore it in accordance with the ordinance. Trying to think, were there other? As far as the property line shift, or as far as the site shift that occurred late in the development plan process, I'll address that a little bit. The ownership of the, this, this property is unique in that it, it doesn't front a public street. Its address is, is 140 Larland. However, its property frontage is entirely another private property. Originally, there, there's not really any physical separation, but that shopping center that, that contains the Dollar General and the Dollar Tree and the gym, there, there's actually about a 40 foot strip along the western boundary that's different ownership than the rest of the parking lot. We didn't realize that until late, and we had acquired a strip of 25 feet across what I thought was the entire frontage. It turned out, we didn't get that last 45 feet. So I had to shift everything over. And, and it actually aligned up better with the existing access easement. And, and it really had minimal impacts to grading as it was kind of a lateral shift. So we were able to make that change pretty quickly and, and kept the site design identical. So with that, I will take any questions that you all may have.
So you're not really sure about what kind of business is actually going to be there? As far as working on larger trucks or track-
I, I, reviewing their, their Facebook page that they have for their, their active business now, which is here in Frankfurt, they show primarily diesel pickup trucks, F-250s, Duramax, Dodge, you know, passenger vehicles, half ton pickup type, type stuff.
Now, we can add restrictions or amendments to this because we already have them on the, on the building below that they can't operate at certain hours and stuff like that. The paint shop, the mechanic shop, or whatever it is down just below this in the lower area, we put restrictions on it.
Uh, that would be news to me.
Oh, they are. Because I mean, we had a problem before about them being out there all night long, working on their cars.
Now, the city has a, has a noise ordinance.
But we've put restrictions on that.
Just generally speaking.
Didn't we put restrictions on that? We did, didn't we? Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So we can do that and move along.
He had already told me that I'm in the quicksand, so I'm being quiet.
Well, he ain't told me to be quiet yet, so I'm in still good order.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Is there going to be any diesel or petroleum storage on that site?
As far as I know, the only diesel storage that would be is the diesel tanks that are on the vehicles that are being worked on. It's not a, it's not, I, I mean, they may be doing oil changes, I, I can't, I, but as far as diesel petroleum, we, we-
That's not what I'm asking you. Are there going to be any kind of-
There's no underground or above ground storage tanks that we've been made aware of that are on the site plan. There's, we're not requesting approval, you know, nothing on the site plan is reflecting any location for diesel. And I can't imagine a building code would allow that to be stored inside without fire protection, and we're not proposing fire protection. So I think I can safely say there will not be any storage of, storage tanks for, for hazardous materials. That wouldn't require some special permit at the building code level.
Please understand, we're not-
Would this be like a gasoline station?
No, sir.
So this is really kind of a repair type of-
I think it's, yes, sir, it's a, a motorsports shop.
Mr. Lee?
What I, one thing I would want to add is having diesel trucks in Frank County, Frank, Frank County. We got Kentucky OSHA here, we got national, state, state, federal OSHA. You've got a lot of people keeping an eye on things like this as far as how they, how they handle their runoff and dispose of their oil and stuff like that. So in that regard, as, as a member of this body, I, I, I feel confident there's people who look after that stuff quite, quite diligently.
Will the commissioner have any other questions for comments? Okay, at this point, I, we have questions from the public, but I think we can merge that into questions and comments at this point in time. Do I hear any? Ms. Schindler.
I just wanted to use the opportunity really briefly, on behalf of Removing Basis Partnership, to talk about that mature vegetated buffers that got mentioned earlier. You know, most of our mature vegetated buffers in Frankfurt are lined heavily with bush honeysuckle, which is in its mature state, but it's not a healthy, healthy vegetation to have. In fact, it's very dangerous, it's a shallow rooted species, so it's not helpful in sucking up the storm waters that trees are. So we have to be aware that just because it's vegetated doesn't mean necessarily that it's healthy vegetation. And many of these areas that we have in our kind of right away strips and around the, the buffers and the margins that aren't well kept are, you know, infested with bush honeysuckle, which is not only exacerbating storm water flows right now, but potentially threatening tree cover in the future because under that dense mid story of bush honeysuckle, you do not have natural tree reggermination. So unless we, you know, proactively deal with invasive species and/or replanting those trees, we are not guaranteed natural tree cover in the future in, in, you know, in Frankfurt and, and beyond. So just using this opportunity as a plug to make you aware that, you know, heavily vegetated areas, you know, there, there are different types, hi- higher quality and lesser qualities of those, and they do have impact on storm water and flooding issues in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, does anyone else need to ask, wants to speak? Does matter? Okay. Do I have a motion for approval or denial of the request?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Lee.
He's going to be directed to the city commission, we're going to vote right now, Lee. I'm requesting approval of development plan for the property located at 140 Larland Avenue.
Second.
Do you second it, though?
All right, Tim. Is there a discussion to the matter?
I may have a question.
We do have a question here.
To do what I want to do, do I do it now or later?
We don't know which one to do.
I want to do amendments, restrictions.
If a motion is made in second,
Right.
You can vote against it or in discussion, you can say there should be amendments in making the motion and a second or a down vote.
Okay.
So we have a motion, second on this one.
Okay.
And I'm calling for discussion, which you, okay. Uh, Secretary D, would you like to call?
Mr. Boggs.
Would you have, do you have a discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we got to do that.
Okay, we're not, okay, I thought discussion, okay.
No. Discussion, no. It had, it was seconded, now we're doing the discussion.
Right, I, I called for discussion and I thought that was over.
The first amendment is that I'd like to offer is that this not be used for any heavy duty equipment, tractor trailers, bulldozers or nothing like that, that be restricted to vehicles, small vehicles and their own.
The, the motion's got the, you, you tried to add an, an-
Amendment, yeah.
The motion has to accept any amendment.
Right, well-
And the second has to accept it.
Well, then he has to accept that or not.
When you say heavy equipment, you mean tractor trailers and large construction?
Right.
Specifically those two things?
Right. Pickup trucks and stuff don't bother me. I, I just, I don't think it's a good fit.
But it's an single axle dumpster.
I don't think anything like that, only for the simple fact of this. You've got two times a day, you have an area that is loaded with cars.
Is that a large number?
You just want to push everything out there, don't you?
You said too vague, you're, you're making the motion very vague.
Okay.
I, I have to know how to apply.
Right.
It is not a motion, it is a request to amend the motion. And I don't know that the individual who made it or the individual who seconded it is going to do it. This is discussion stage. You're supposed to be saying what you, you would like to discuss it, to change to.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to change. Okay, wait a minute, we're going to go back again.
You can make a motion.
Okay.
You can discuss what you would like the, the board to think about and maybe add that.
All right, he's already said the other part.
To be more specific, could we potentially consider restricting vehicles that require commercial driver's license? Therefore, that would give us some level of specificity that's what we're-
I can, I can live with that except for dozers and stuff like that don't require a commercial driver's license.
Or street legal vehicles that require a commercial driver's license?
Okay, I can live with that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Lee.
To please my fellow commissioners, because I'm all about compromise. I'd like to amend my motion with, with one addendum that CDL certified equipment shall not be, uh, cannot be, cannot be worked on, this comes from-
Along with heavy contraptions.
No, I'll, I'll leave it at that, CDL.
Do we have a-
You can't get that stuff there with the CDL, either?
Okay.
I've got a question for Mr. Pelosi. Given what you just said, based on your client, do you, do you have the authority to make that restriction for your client?
It was a suggestion.
Otherwise, we're going to pass it through and then they're going to come back. So I need to know if, if you have the authority and are confident with that, based on your clients, your knowledge of your client.
I'm, I'm going to turn around and look at Charlie real quick and ask him what.
What's the, let me, Mr. Sanchez, what's the, I'm, I'm trying to remember the Christmas parade. There were lots of vehicles for a long stretch, and I seem to remember lots of trucks that seemed like they may have been, truck had to look fancy, like ex dump trucks. Is there a concern if like a, a dump truck's coming in there? It's, it's not, I'm just trying to figure out, not being overly restrictive to the business that, you know, if somebody's bringing in their tractor trailer, just the front of it, to come in because they want to get special hubcaps or something, I, I don't know what this business exactly does.
The problem to me exists that you, you got a daycare and you got a school. So you've got a bunch of kids running around there all the time, one. Two, when you start allowing them in, two times a day, you can't get down East Main in that area because of all the cars trying to get into to get the school, kid's school and drop them off in the morning. So you start adding tractor trailers, parking and, and in the street, trying to get across the road and everything else, you will have nothing but a major traffic jam all day long. So to eliminate that is to eliminate that vehicle.
Yeah, but I don't, I just a question if they're just bringing the, the cab in and they're not going to be bringing the whole truck potentially, is that-
Where they're going to take the doc, drop the bed off.
We're assuming just-
I mean, they're a single, they're a single owner operators that have just the, the-
I agree with all that.
They're not going to pull the bed around all the time. They're, they're going to have the major repair, they're probably going to leave the bed somewhere and drop the cab here. So I, 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 I mean, I don't-
I'm just saying y'all are opening up a, a-
Based on the website.
And I know there's not been a traffic study or anything, but you, you don't indicate there'd be a-
Just an existing company in town.
Okay.
I don't know what to do.
I'll tell you, guys, just to make it very simple, I'm, I'm going to stick with my first motion with no addendums and let's see how it pans out.
Are you, you're not?
No, I'm not making the denburs.
Not, not any changes to it?
No, I'm just going to request approval of development plan for the-
Okay, we have a second on that, too, don't we?
Second remains.
Okay, do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? There's no discussion, none, Secretary, would you please call a roll?
Yes. Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yeah.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
No.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes. A to one.
Okay, election of officers for 2020 calendar year, we had a nominated committee will serve by Ms. Cross, Mr. Sanderson and Paul Looney. I think you would share that, aren't you, Paul Looney? Okay, would you like to go ahead and make your presentation?
Uh, to remember, the officers for the new year will be, Mr. May will be chairman, Mr. Lusher will be vice chairman, and Mr. Lee will be treasurer.
Secretary Treas-
Secretary Treas-
How would you recommend?
Yeah.
Did, did you ever combine? Yeah, did you ever slash, same as last year?
Treas-
Yes.
Okay, that's the slate. Are there any other further nominations from this commission? I'm hearing none. Are there any, anyone on the floor who would like to make a, that's, that was, Ms., Ms., Ms. Silver, so that's been done in the past, who would recommend somebody here on this commission to be nominated for a position? There are none.
Mr. Chair. I would offer a motion-
That, that, I got some looks here, but Ms. Silver and I had a discussion that that used to be done in the past and I thought it might be a right time to do it now.
We've got the same looks in the past, you got them.
Well, I wasn't, I didn't make those, okay.
Well, I'm not being critical of you, of, of your inquiry. My, uh, motion is that nominations cease.
Cease. Second.
And maybe nobody will second that.
I'll second it.
It's been seconded? Okay. Bob Secretary, you want to go ahead and call that?
Sure. Mr. Boggs?
This roll call is to approve them, right?
Right.
Okay.
Now, you got-
Cease nominations.
Cease, okay, cease, right, exactly, okay, cease nominations, okay, I got it right here. Okay.
Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Swager?
Yes.
Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes, you may.
Okay. So the motion now is to vote on the, is it the slate?
Is to elect the slate as offered by nominating committee for leadership of the planning commission for the ensuing year of FY 2023.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. So I don't think there's any discussion here, so we want to go ahead and do a roll call with Ms. Silver.
Yes. Mr. Boggs?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yeah.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Swager? Chairman Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So our new officers for beginning next month will be, you'll make chairman. And we'll have, Tim Lusher will be vice chair and our secretary treasurer will be Keith Lee. And I, and for the, unofficially, I want to, Vicky, I wasn't trying to throw you under the bus. I thought it was a good idea to offer a floor nomination. The look I got in these guys was pretty withering, I'd say.
Does Chairman I make the motion adjourned?
Adjourned.
No, no, no.
Got a second, got a second, got a second.
Not yet.
I think we still have to, uh-
Oh, wait a minute, we do, we could have hit, oh, we got the calendar and we, I want to get out of here too quickly. I want to hand that gavel over too quickly.
And I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, uh, the calendar for the planning, planning zone commission for 2023.
I second that. I'm sorry, Mr. Lee.
No, I saw it on there.
I forgot.
Hey, I'm sitting here thinking, I'm ready, you think I'm-
Which one?
We're pretty gone.
We're already gone.
And we, I'm sorry, we do have a, we actually have a, another, I'm sorry, Brent, we do have a, you have your moment here in a second. Okay, this is, this, this is the approval of the meeting calendar, right?
Yes.
Okay, wait a second.
We did.
Okay, all those papers, we will have, all this question, we can do, I think we do this one.
Yeah.
All those papers, can I say aye? Aye. Close? Okay. Now, the next, next one, uh, other business is update on the planning commission website, a very important presentation, and Brent, I'm sorry, I was going to get out here too quickly.
Okay, well, I, I won't, I won't take too long to do this, but there's a, several things that uh we've been working on to try to improve our process so that things are more transparent, that we have more information out there, and that things run more smoothly uh as we hold our meetings. Uh one of those things on the list that I've been working with uh city staff on is to uh improve the planning commission's website. Uh you may know that there is a city department website, there is a county website, and there is a separate planning commission site. So this is one that uh is, is focused on the planning commission, and so Jordan's been working with me on this, he's done a nice, nice job, um and we, we've got it, I think, organized pretty well, and information is easy to get to, uh whether you're looking at the subdivision regs, or the comp plan information, or uh members of the planning commission, it's all um right there. And another thing that we are in the beginning stages of working on is to try to get where, when we have our meetings and we have uh findings of fact or motions, things that like we've gone through tonight, is that we have that, where we can see them on the computer screen, we can edit things uh in real time, and that way we'll all be able to see and be clear on what we're discussing and voting on. So hopefully that'll be something we'll have in the near future. And that's all I got.
Uh do I have any, uh, any questions uh from Mr. Mr. Swager in regard to this? I, I have been on the website myself, and it, it's working, you know, I can tell some different uh, it's good. However, I think that, that the issue with providing information, the input of information from this desk to go on screens and so forth is something we got to approach with some, some concern, because it's, it's becomes a, a, once it gets on the screen there, it could become a form of, of a record. Mr. Logan, uh, we, council, we have, there, there are some issues with just having someone up there through the laptop or whatever and tries to make it, provide minutes.
It depends on, it depends on what you're putting on there, I, I don't, I didn't hear anything, Mr. Swager said.
Brent, what, what do you have in mind in regard to what you would like to see during the meeting that would be on the screen?
Well, I mean, there's oftentimes we're going through and talking about, we're making a motion, and we get confused because somebody says a motion and somebody doesn't remember exactly what was said, and so if we can see that, we can make sure it's the way we want it. So.
As long as that's not the official, I mean, I think we have to have an official with the corporate reporter. If we're putting something up, it would have to be there, if we're going to make that our official designation, that's not to be done by a corporate reporter or somebody certified, so.
Yes.
I think if you just want to do it to help people out, to say, here's what we're doing, that's one thing, but otherwise, the corporate reporter would read back to you specifically what, and we had to do that.
Right.
To read back specifically verbatim what the motion said and what we want.
Yeah.
I don't want to do away with the official record, because it's going to add another layer of.
Right. Yeah, and this is something we're just starting to work through, so we're going to try to figure out the best way to do it.
Ladies and gentlemen, before I make a motion, I want to thank Chairman Wright for his leadership for a, in a tough 2022 year.
Amen.
Uh well, well deserved, appreciate your service and your leadership on the board, and that being said, I make a motion adjourned.
Okay, second.
I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Non-debatable.
I understand.